And I am calling in to order our regular board session. Okay, everyone, our first order of business is our flag salute. If you all join me, please, I'll mute this time so we don't get a lot of feedback from everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I love my board meeting. Agenda, so our first item that we have is our recognition and proclamations. We have one proclamation today that I will be reading. And it's in your board packets as well. There's an additional one, here we go. The Hillsborough School District celebrates the 20th anniversary that President Bill Clinton declared June Gay and Lesbian Pride Month. And that on June 1st, 2009, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration further by declaring June to be lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender pride month. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that the struggle for dignity and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning LGBTQ people is reflected in the tireless dedication of advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society. The Hillsborough School District understands that LGBTQ individuals, including those who live in our local communities, face discrimination simply for being who they are and for who they love. And there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every person. The Hillsborough School District commemorates the landmark Supreme Court decision of 2015 guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states was a historic victory for LGBTQ Americans and continues to affirm our belief that we are all more free when we are treated as equals. The Hillsborough School District celebrates that the month of June is nationally recognized as a time to celebrate contributions of the LGBTQ community to our society and collective history. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School Districts do hereby proclaim the month of June 2020 to be LGBTQ Pride Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of the LGBTQ community to the development and prosperity of our society. Thank you all. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our approval of agenda and looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Jackie. All those in favor, please signify by commenting in the chat. Yes or no in your votes? Or I? Okay, I am reading the yeses. Lisa Allen, Yadira Martinez, Sheen Ken, Mark Granham, Jackie Spross, Mark Watson. I'm looking for a comment here, sorry. And the motion carries. Mark, Martin, did you have a comment?
Question actually, maybe Mike would know, is this the first time the Hillsborough School Board has made the LGBTQ proclamation?
Yes, this is the first time we've done that.
Excellent. I, I just want to congratulate the Hillsborough School District on, on making this first proclamation, it's, it's huge.
Thank you, Martin. Our next item on our agenda is we have audience time and as we know, there's a availability for our community members to provide public comment on our website. Rose, do we have any public comment today? So I may read.
Yes, I'm going to read that for you.
Okay, let me first read our audience participation statement. Public participation in board meeting is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intend to speak card available on our website. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda. Unless otherwise authorized by the board, comments about non-agenda items will be heard at this time. Speakers should state their name, and if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individual individuals include board policy KL, public comment, the visitor, with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. And with that, I'll have Beth read us our public comments.
All right, we have one intend to speak and that was submitted by Haley Gesford, who is one of our students, she's a senior at Glencoe High School. I just so happen to know she's one of the valedictorians as well as senior class president. And I know that she's fielding a lot of questions from both her classmates and from parents and community members. So I have to hand it to Haley, she's really doing a great job and handling it all in stride. So here's her comment. First, thank you for the work being done to make sure we get some kind of commencement. I know teacher parades where teachers drive by students aren't allowed, but what about parades for our seniors through neighborhoods where they could drive by the teachers? Properly social distanced, of course. Also, are there exceptions being made for split families or large families for the one car per graduate rule during the drive-through commencement? Mike, are you okay with me taking part of that?
Yep, let me, let me take part and then you take part, sorry, I was unmuted quickly and I was struggling, so here we go. First of all, Haley, thank you for the question. And, and to Beth's point, Haley has been doing a great job of fielding questions and, and helping us do some planning on what our graduation ceremonies would look like. So we, we did get from a few parents the question about the number of cars. And Beth mentioned this a little bit earlier, but we have asked that families continue to try and work that out to, to do the one car scenario. And the reason for that, as Beth mentioned earlier, is that we have that max guideline of gathering that we are staying within. And so if we get more cars and people coming out and doing pictures while we've got staff members there and we've got people filming and we've got graduates going across the stage, then we, we can quickly exceed that. The other, the other reason that we're being so careful with that is that we're on a pretty tight timeline. If we think two to three minutes per graduate to come into the stadium or once they get out of the car and they get what they need at the table in the station and they do their video going across, they announce their name, we are going to struggle to stay within, to, to stay within that two to three minute period. So we've asked that pictures be taken in a, in a different location and that we, we really keep to a, a small number gathered in any one spot. So, um, so that, that's part of the reason behind that. When it comes to the parade piece, we've tried to be really careful about providing opportunity for our graduates that all graduates can participate within. So for example, if, if students were going to do a parade or if we were going to, in reverse, if there was going to be a parade to the students' house, we, we want to be mindful of two things. We've got, we've got high density housing situations with a number of our students that could pull a high number of people out of any one building or any one location. And we could unknowing or without trying, we could be setting up an, an opportunity for a lot of people to gather just by the spectacle that we would be creating. The other way of looking at that, if it were to be a student parade that went by the teachers' homes, first of all, I think we would, a couple of things on that, we would have teachers that, that weren't maybe able to participate or getting teachers all together in one location again would, would result in exceeding the number. And the other thing that we're mindful of is that not all students would have the ability to participate in that parade. And we're, like I mentioned at the onset, we really are trying to keep our activities something that everyone can participate in. Beth or Dale, anything you want to add to that?
You did a great job, Mike. The only other thing that I was going to add to the concerns related to more than one car per graduate is that one of the things that almost shut us down with Hillsborough Police was the whole issue around traffic control. And so we need to be very vigilant about limiting the number of vehicles that we have coming into the stadium and going out of the stadium at any given time. And if we end up in a situation where for some reason we're backing up onto Century Boulevard, as much as they support this activity and event, we could put ourselves in a situation where they have to shut us down. And I just don't want any of our graduates to have to be in that situation. We want this to be as smooth and happy an event as possible. And, and as much as we understand that there are some families with difficult situations, we're just asking that you really try your best to work it out for one day. And that's also why we're trying to do so many things to give you alternate options with the live stream, with the broadcast over the FM station, things like that.
Thank you, Mike and Beth. There's a, just a couple of comments in the comments area that I wanted to address. That normally we don't address public comment right away when we speak to it, but I think at this moment with a lot of the COVID-19 updates that we're doing, usually Mike will also address things during his superintendent time. So I'm, I think it's totally fine to address this right now, just because this is kind of on everybody's mind right now with graduations. The other comments on here that, from Jackie, that this is also a privacy confidential issue with addresses of staff agreed by Amanda and Mark. And I think Andrew, just for clarification, was saying that I think you're referring to staff physically distancing at the school, not giving out like their address to go drive by their neighborhoods, if that's accurate. So I just wanted to share those comments that are in here because of our live stream now. So with that, we are moving on to our next item on our agenda, which is our consent agenda and I'm looking for a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Second.
So it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Sheen. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signal by typing in the chat yes or I. All the I's are Mark Watson, Yadira Martinez, Lisa Allen, Martin Granham, Sheen Ken, Jackie Spross, and myself. The motion carries. Our next item on our agenda is our action items. And we have three, we'll start with our first one with Michelle Morrison, which is to approve lease financing and resolution for bus, school bus purchase.
Thank you. So tonight we're bringing forward step two of two. And as, as it states on your situation page, we approved purchases for buses. Kind of as we're on our gross polluter replacement schedule, we approved a purchase of 15 buses back in January and that order has gone in. And this is part two, which is securing lease financing for 10 of the 15 buses. Five of those buses were going to be paid for by a Volkswagen settlement brokered by the DEQ. So all of these things are currently in place. This is an annual process that we do in order to, like I mentioned, stay on our schedule for replacement of gross polluters. Looking ahead a little bit and given our potential limitations around transportation for students, I don't see that we're going to have any lessening of a need for buses as we move into next year. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the lease, the reimbursement that's required by the bank. It's a process that we have in place to pass a resolution that allows the district to pay the vendors directly and then reimburse itself from the proceeds of the lease at the, at the time all of the equipment is received. So that's the reason for the additional resolution piece.
There are no questions for Michelle, then I'm looking for a motion.
Look at the Board of Directors approve the financing of 10 vehicles on a four-year lease with an annual payment not to exceed $332,466.60 and adopt a resolution for reimbursement as required by US Bank Government Leasing.
Second.
So it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Yadira. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by voting I or yes in the chat, please. All of our yes votes are Jackie Spross, Martin Granham, Yadira Martinez, Lisa Allen, Mark Watson, Sheen Ken, and myself. The motion carries.
Thank you. I will, I will be asking Rose to circle back with you to get a signature on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next item on our agenda is to elect our Northwest, Northwest REST board member.
All right, I think that one's me and I see Lisa Bullets has joined us and she's lurking outside her home somewhere there. So Lisa, welcome, good to see you. As you are aware, that the Northwest Regional ESD, their positions, when they come open, one of the things that we do is we, or we don't do it, the Northwest Regional ESD, they post in papers of, in their papers of record that there is an opening, they also post online for several weeks. And after that is done, the applications go to the ESD and then they send them to the school districts for which the zone that that candidate represents. So Lisa represents the Hillsborough School District. And these elections typically aren't as involved as a regular school board meeting. I think Lisa can probably attest to that because she's done both. In this particular, for Zone Three, we actually are the only district that represents, represents Zone Three. So we're the only district making, making a decision on this. Lisa was the only applicant, probably because she's doing such a nice job, nobody wanted to challenge her. So thanks, Lisa, for your years of service. And just some things for you to know about Lisa is that she is a former member of the Hillsborough School District Board. She's worked in the Sherwood School District. And she's also the parent of a student that receives, receives special services. And so she's got a lot of, a lot of background and information. And Lisa, I'll give you a chance to share additional information. I hope I didn't steal everything that you, you shared in your, in your election materials. So my apologies if I did that. Lisa, you are muted.
Here we go. Okay, I was able to find it. And I really don't have anything else to add. I've been on the ESD board now eight years. So I'm representing the Hillsborough School District Boundary Area. I still live in the Shoals community and I would be thrilled to do it for another four years. Do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I might ask Lisa a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Lisa, actually it's more of a statement, I'd like to say thank you for your service. It's, it's, it's much appreciated. And I did want to share with you a value of mine certainly. And I think many have thought all of my colleagues or in the district more broadly is around the issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So as a member of the ESD, if you would, if you would do everything that you can to further those goals and keep that on the forefront of the ESD's thinking and, and actions and planning, I think that would be much appreciated certainly by me.
Yeah, definitely. It is going to be part of the newly adopted strategic plan. It is threaded through all the different goals of our strategic plan. We are, as an agency, our staff does not represent the students in which we serve. And that is something we're actively working on, including working with the pipeline for new teachers.
I don't know, just earlier, Lisa, but we just passed the first LGBTQ proclamation as, as a district. So that I think is reflective of where our, our hearts are on the issues of diversity.
Agreed.
Thank you, Martin, for your comments and thank you, Lisa, for your service. There's also just some additional kudos and thanks to you from our board members as well.
Thank you.
So if there are no further questions for Lisa, I'm looking for a motion for members.
I move that the Board of Directors endorse the Zone Three candidate application as presented.
Second.
So it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Martin. Is there any further discussion? There isn't any, please signify by voting yes or I or no on your chat screen so I can count, tally your votes, please. Okay, all the yeses are Jackie Spross, Yadira Martinez, Mark Watson, Sheen Ken, Lisa Allen, Martin Granham, and myself. The motion carries. Thank you, Lisa, for joining us.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, our next item on our agenda. Item three, ratify agreement with Hillsborough Classified United with Conal Lou Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I want to direct you to page 29 and 30 of the board packet to talk about this ratification. So this is about House Bill 2016. It's the Oregon Public Workers Protection Act and the legislature passed this in this past year to address collective bargaining for public employees. And the new law requires public employers to provide reasonable paid time off in labor and employment union activities. And this House bill went into effect on January 1st, 2020. So during this early part of spring, in February, we started to have conversations with the union around this. And they requested to negotiate, to implement those changes. And we wanted that to better match the provisions of the House bill. And we were only updating certain sections of Article Four, Union Rights, as a classified management agreement had language that did meet some of those guidelines. On May 12th, we were able to reach tentative agreement with HCU to update the Article Four for the Union Rights in the areas for lease time, information, and the new employee orientation. And so some of the language that was already there, we updated our release time was to provide full-time leave for the Union President. The modification that we also put in place was if there was a wish to go beyond the three years for such service, that would be dependent on a discussion that would take place and mutual agreement between the district and the union. And then also additionally, we currently have 1,000 hours per school year for union activities to take place, which we negotiated in our last contract process with bargaining. And we also expanded those pieces to include a union sanctioned training conferences or advocacy activities that they could use those 1,000 hours for. And then in terms of information, we just updated the pieces that allowed for edible digital spreadsheet containing information for each employee in the bargaining unit. And the new language includes all the information outlined in House Bill 2016, consolidating the multiple reports currently shared with the union as one report. And then finally, the new employee orientation was another topic of conversation through our bargaining conversations. And this would allow, if we had a new employee orientation, that there would be time for the union to work with the newly hired bargaining unit members and employees for at least 30 minutes. And the language was included since the district currently offers an online orientation for all classified employees. So that is an overview of this ratification and so I would open it up to any questions that we may have.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the updated bargaining agreement language with Hillsborough Classified United, effective for the remainder of the current agreement, which is through June 30th, 2021, as tentatively agreed to by the district bargaining team.
Second.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Jackie. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by voting yes or I in our chat. Okay, all the yes votes are Martin Granham, Yadira Martinez, Lisa Allen, Sheen Ken, Mark Watson, Jackie Spross, and myself. The motion carries. Now a reminder from Beth, and I will remember to do this at the beginning of our meeting as well, is just to speak slowly for the benefit of our translators that are translating our meeting. Okay, our next item on our agenda is reports and discussion. We have a financial report with Michelle.
Thank you. Directors, just want to give my usual shout out to my team and the business office and the work that they're doing and our focus on right now kind of supporting administrators and families as they, our staff are doing some creative fundraising and kind of helping to channel those efforts and provide them support, given the district's lens and controls in that. Just a note that we didn't have any donations received by the district in excess of $5,000 for April. But I know that, and if you are interested in more information, Beth may have it as well. But a giant lift from our friends at Hillsborough Schools Foundation to develop a fund to support our vulnerable families. So those are some really big efforts that we're working on. I have, you can see that we're starting to dip a little bit in our workman's comp and incident reports, of course, because schools aren't experiencing students right now. So there's that as a note that's different. And then I'm happy to any, answer any questions you might have about our cash flow report as well.
Do you want me to add information about what has come through Hillsborough Schools Foundation?
I, I think that would be appropriate if.
I know that, gosh, last time I checked, which was well over a week ago, they were up to almost $10,000 in donations through the special donation link that they popped up for us several weeks back, which is amazing. And kind of as they get the money, they bring it over and, and deposit it with us. We've set up, I shouldn't say we, Kristi Woodard down in the business office has helped set up a special account code for that. And I just signed today the first two reimbursement requests for our volunteer coordinator, Colleen, who has purchased food to go to our school-based food pantries. You know, and that money is going to reimburse that, that effort. So that's amazing. And we also, Erin, on our behalf, wrote a grant to the Hillsborough Community Foundation that was funded at a level of $15,000. that was funded at a level of fifteen thousand dollars. And then we also recently found out that we are receiving twenty five thousand dollars from Intel that will support our effort to provide internet access to students. So we are very grateful for all that. And then, of course, we had full donation support for all of our senior signs, which was over a nine thousand dollar lift to get all those senior signs made. And we're very appreciative to that.
If I could just chime onto that, um, Erin Carlson is listening right now. And it'd just be a great opportunity to say thank you to her. And I've, I've been saying throughout this entire, um, event over the last couple of months that the, really the silver lining in all of this is how quickly our partners have been able to pivot to meet the needs of our students. And I think the Hillsborough Schools Foundation is, is just an incredible example of that. To, to shift to, um, gathering funds that could quickly assist students and families in need, absolutely amazing. So, um, Erin, I know you're out there listening and just a, a big thank you to the entire Hillsborough Schools Foundation, as well as Intel, as well as those other companies that are contributing to help make this experience, the experience for our students as bearable as possible. So huge thank you.
Yeah, she texted me and said it's at sixty thousand now. So wow, it was off by about ten thousand. But we, again, like Mike said, we're super appreciative.
So the flip side to that is the pretty significant, um, collaboration that's happening within the district so that regardless of what the, the families are needing, uh, we're trying to connect them with resources. So everything from access to the internet, technology to basic needs in the home, um, we've developed the mechanism to funnel people to the right space. So it's, it's been a real privilege to be a part of that.
Thank you, Michelle, for the report. Okay, is there no further questions on this topic? We are moving on to our next, um, item on our agenda, which is H C U and H E A reports. And do we have our reps on?
Hi, everyone. Jill Golay, Hillsborough Education Association President. And, um, I just tonight just wanted to just give a shout out to all of my members, the teachers and nurses, counselors, psychs. They are amazing. They have worked, you know, diligently through all of these challenges. And I know they're really looking forward to June thirteenth. And I just wanted to recognize all of them and, and just say thank you and how much I appreciate them. And I'm just so privileged to be their president and just, um, will continue to navigate, um, the weeks ahead and what summer and fall will look like. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Do we have Melody on?
Yeah, I'm here. Um, well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for, um, voting to approve the bargaining agreement. Started out really kind of, we started out meeting face to face and then we had to switch it up and do a virtual bargaining, which was interesting, but not as bad as I had thought it would be. Um, so thank you for, um, approving that. Um, I'm just gonna keep it super short tonight. It has been an incredible few weeks. Working long hours, trying to do my furlough hours too. Um, I think one day I was successful. Um, okay, not really. Um, but I just want to put a shout out to the classified employees that, you know, they're putting in the time, they're putting in their work, um, doing things that they normally wouldn't do. So thank you to all of them. And, um, big thank you to everybody for stepping up and being flexible and having some compassion for different people and going through different things. Because we don't really know what anybody's going through until we walk in their shoes. And so I just want to say thank you for showing some compassion to the employees and the students and stuff. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Melanie. Okay, our next, um, item is we have discussion time. And let's start with our student reps. And I'll just call on who I see on my screen first. Maria.
Okay, um, I just want to say that I am super proud about our board. Um, I've been looking, I've been talking to a lot of, like, kids from my class. And, um, although they do wish that we could go further with things, um, I do try to remind them, like, the guidelines that we're following. And I, they do get in, um, they get back to thinking that, well, at least we're having something, you know? And we look at other districts at other states and some of them aren't even celebrating their students. So to see that, to see how much you guys have, we've tried to have something, i- it's so cool to see and to be part of because not everyone gets to live with it. So I'm very grateful for that and I'm very proud of a- all of you guys because I know that it's super hard right now. But you guys are doing your best and your actions show it. So, um, other than that, I'm just very grateful.
Thank you, Maria. I love seeing you're down in the background.
Thank you. Very excited to use it.
Um, next we have Andrew.
Um, I'd like to start by thanking all of our essential workers and H S C staff. Um, I know, uh, many or all teachers have been off campus and, um, classified staff have been driving buses or doing other things, um, around the district to help out as well. Um, and, um, we have eternal appreciation. Um, also a shout, a shout out to, um, the members of the senior leadership team. We've been, um, as Mike said, we've been fielding a lot of questions, um, about graduation. We've had to be truthful with some people, um, in terms of not giving false hope and really being real with, um, our class about the situation. Um, but we are grateful, as Maria said, that we're still getting some sort of opportunity to celebrate. Um, I guess in terms of what's, what's been going on with my life, um, I participated in my first election, which was super cool. Um, and then what else happened? Um, Thursday, uh, May fourteenth, um, I think Marie and I both got our signs. Um, it's super cool to have a sign out, um, in my front yard saying, you know, class of twenty twenty graduate. Um, and I think this is something that we should continue, um, moving forward, even if we, um, get back to having in-person ceremonies. Because, um, it is nice having something that, you know, highlights that, you know, we're graduating. Um, I know I, some neighbors, um, surprised me with some balloons, which is super nice of them. Um, and then I also submitted my, um, A P art portfolio. Um, A P art is real. Um, there are portfolios for drawing, two D design and, and three D design. And I did the two D art and design, um, and super fun. I've been in art for all four years, um, of high school. And, um, it really has helped me in terms of expressing myself, exploring new, um, ways to show things visually and to be able to represent things, whether in an abstract way or in a realistic way. And, um, moving forward, um, I know we have a lot of, um, budget things coming up. Um, but I do hope that we, um, continue funding the arts and music equitably. Because, you know, they truly are what make us human. There's a reason that they're called the humanities is because they are what make us human. Um, and no other species has ability to manipulate color, sound and space, um, in the way that we can as humans. Um, and last but not least, uh, last but not least, um, in about fifteen, twenty minutes is the season premiere of America's Got Talent. Um, summer hasn't really started or, um, the beginning of summer break hasn't really started until America's Got Talent starts. So, um, it's awesome that, um, that's coming back on. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. That is a really beautiful sentiment about why it's called the humanities. I think that was really great. Um, and our last student rep is Danny.
Hi, uh, I wanted to first say, like, congratulations to both Andrew and Maria for our two seniors this year. As the only non-senior student rep, I have to say, I'm a little jealous of the salon signs, but you know, do hope it's something we keep up. They look cool. Uh, I've been really enjoying, uh, on my drive to work and, you know, taking my dog on walks, seeing all the yard signs out in my neighborhood and being like, oh, I didn't know we had so many seniors in our neighborhood and different things like that. I think that's been super fun. I want to thank the board for all of their, like, you know, keeping it together and trying to move forward as much as we can in this difficult time and make those difficult decisions about whether or not we're gonna cut something and how we're gonna handle graduation and all that. And I think especially thank you to Beth for really getting out there and trying hard for our seniors to make sure that they get celebrated in the way that they belong. On a more personal note, uh, P C C, we're about two, three weeks away from, uh, finals. I should probably strap down what week that is. Um, and so our early college students were, were working hard, trying to get all that figured out with balancing, um, both regular high school stuff and then early college stuff at the same time, working towards that. And I know that all the seniors that I've talked to are sort of expressing the same sentiment that Maria was saying of like, being a little, like, you know, sad they don't get their full graduation thing, but being happy that the district is still finding a way to celebrate them. So thanks to that.
Thank you, Danny. Say hi to Scooby for us. Um, and next we'll have our superintendent's time, uh, with Mike.
All right, thank you. Um, as was mentioned, we are going to be working on what fall looks like and that's going to take up a considerable amount of time moving forward, as well as the whole budgeting process. That's something that, um, we just agonize over trying to get it just right. And the depth of the potential cuts that are coming at us are pretty significant. So we're going to be spending a lot of time on that, much more information to come on that. However, I would like to, I just join on two or end on two positive notes. Um, it was mentioned by both, um, Jill and Melody, the, the way that the staff has, has responded to this crisis that we find ourselves in. And it really is amazing, the, the, the different delivery model that has had to be employed and the, the steep learning curve that was necessary to make all that happen. So, um, a huge thanks to all of our staff members who have been able to, uh, make this happen for our students. And, um, I think Yadira, Yadira said it several months ago, is that each week it just continues to get better and better. And, um, I just appreciate all of the staff who have, who have, um, made that happen for our students. The other thing I would say is I'm looking forward over the next couple of weeks to dropping in and celebrating the graduates. Uh, really wish that we could do that in person. And I know that, I know the board literally is the favorite thing they talk about uh, each year is, is graduations and, uh, just heartbreaking that we can't do that in person. But don't let that diminish the accomplishment because it certainly doesn't for us. We're, we're incredibly proud of all of our seniors, our two seniors here for our student reps, incredibly proud of you guys. And look forward to celebrating you just in a very different way this time around. So that, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mike. I'm just gonna call my board members in the order I see them here. Uh, Jackie.
Um, I really don't have a lot. I hope everybody had a safe, um, long holiday weekend. And you're, everyone's still adjusting to living at work, um, or going into work, whatever it is that you do. Um, and yeah, that's about it. Just stay safe, stay healthy and remember to be kind.
Thanks, Jackie. Uh, Mark, you're next, and then Martin, you're on deck.
A couple of great events recently. So the, had the opportunity to participate in the retirement ceremony and it was pretty spectacular. Uh, Martin was there too. And it was just, the, the common theme that ran through, uh, their, their comments was, you know, sense of family, sense of community. It was really, uh, made me very proud to be part of that organization. Um, we also did the vows and sows lunch. Um, Beth coordinated. It was awesome. We got to drop off. We all, you know, wore our masks, had our hand sanitizer, picked up individual boxes for the vows and sows at Peaches Meacham, then dropped them off at their house so that they could, um, yeah, I, did you guys all Zoom? Probably did it all Zoom or something like that. So I was, had to pick up my kids from the airport. So I could only participate in the dropout part. But it was awesome. And, you know, and at one point, uh, a student's mom answered the door, went and got him. When he came to the door, I'm like, oh, I think you did a duet with my son once. He's like, yes, yes, I did. So, uh, you know, just, I didn't recognize his name on the sheet, but it was great to see him. Um, so just a reminder that we are still doing some great events with the district, uh, virtual H S, proud to be H S D and everything. So, um, keep, keep, uh, finding ways to participate in those. I guess that leads me to sort of my, uh, my sort of commentary would be, um, a couple of things, you know, like nomenclature, the words we use have meaning and a subtle way to sort of change the world for better is to sort of use the language that represents what you're thinking of. So, um, when people say social distancing, I try not to use that term. I try to use physical distancing. We're very social creatures. The connections between us are important. We need to find ways to make sure those connections stay. We're just staying apart from each other physically. So I would advocate for using the term physical distancing instead of social distancing. Um, I'm talking too fast, as you realize. Uh, and the other thing, um, the other thing I would advocate for is, you know, we, we hear people talking about, um, get back to normal or the new normal or, you know, what things are gonna look like. And I would just, uh, you know, just, it's a reminder to me that, uh, if, if what we called before COVID normal, that for many of our students, for many in our community, that normal wasn't all that great. Um, so I would advocate for, let's use the term a new normal and focus on what, how we can make that situation better for everybody. When we construct the new normal, let's keep in mind that what people would call normal wasn't so great for everybody. So, you know, back to normal, I would rather not do that. I would rather create a new normal that's better. So those are my two, uh, advocacy for just nomenclature.
I'd like to echo Danny's comments and others. I love the yard signs. Love, love, love the yard signs. They bring a smile to me every time I see them and I drive past the same one multiple times and I smile every time. To Jill and Melody, thank you very much. I've been waiting to, uh, to have you rejoin our board meetings in this new medium. And, and I feel like we've arrived now to a fully functioning board when we hear your voice, your voices that are important. And, uh, and that really made me very, very happy to, to see and hear both of you this evening. And, um, thank you very much for joining us in this digital realm and making our board meeting complete. We had committee participation. We had, uh, a public comment, uh, and we had our union leaders, uh, join. And that was very satisfying to me. I want to report back to my colleagues that I did in fact have a conversation, a wonderful conversation with, um, Mr. Young, who had reached out to us and, uh, it was very enjoyable, very productive. Uh, and, uh, he's just a great guy, a voice in the community that we need to pay attention to and, and engage with. And, uh, and we ended, uh, reflecting on what a wonderful time we both had at the Shockwave Robotics, which for me was the last really mass gathering I was able to participate in. And, uh, so, um, I think he feels good about the decisions that we made. He might not agree with them, but he understands why we made them and, and he has a lot of respect for that. And then lastly, Erica, I just want to say thank you, um, for expressing interest in serving again as our chair. Um, you're doing a fantastic job. You are absolutely magnificent in that role. I couldn't be more grateful for you willing to step into that very public, invisible and demanding role on all of our behalf and serve us and the district so well. A highlight for me was when you and Mike gave a joint address to the community and Mike spoke in English and you spoke in Spanish. And I thought, wow, that was just epic. Uh, content delivered, original content delivered in Spanish to our community. That's powerful stuff and you made that possible. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Martin. Um, next up we have Yadira and then Sheen on deck.
Um, I don't have much. Um, I don't know about the other board members, but I will be attending a graduation. Um, I'll be in one of those, uh, cars there cheering my son on. Um, I think I sent everyone a picture of my yard sign. And so, um, we're looking forward to celebrating him. Um, and, you know, I think our community has just come together And, you know, I think our community has come together and really shown our seniors love. We got free doughnuts and now there's like free pizza and stuff. So, I mean, it's great. We are pretty bummed though. We were planning on going to Cancun for graduation, but that's been put off. So, we'll still go, but maybe later. So, yeah, and it's, it's, it's really wonderful though how our community has, has come together to really support our graduating seniors and let them know that, you know, we're all thinking of them and we're all proud of their achievement and we're excited for the next phases of their life.
So, I was able to attend the Val Sal or tune into the Val Sal lunch. And gosh, I loved, I absolutely loved hearing from, from all of our seniors who were on that call, just what their upcoming plans are and their favorite memories in high school. And I think one of my favorite things was as they were sharing, you know, advice for incoming freshmen, so many of them said, you know, take advantage of building relationships with teachers and staff early. And I think that just goes to show the incredible amount of work and intentionality that our teachers and staff have put into building relationships with these students to where that is, you know, kind of the resounding comment that, that a lot of our seniors had for incoming freshmen. So, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to, to all of our teachers and our staff members who have connected, you know, on a daily basis with these students and have really made a memorable impact on their lives. So, just wanted to say that that was a huge highlight. I am so bummed that we won't be able to participate in the graduation. I did get to go to the summer graduation, so at least I have a little glimpse of what that's like. But yeah, I think, you know, if there's any way that, that we could, anything that we can do, whether that's through a video, I loved that idea of a video. And maybe we could even stop by, pick up gowns and film a video so that we keep the graduation kind of spirit alive in the video messaging or something like that. I'd love to see how, how we can maybe, maybe do that. Or even if it's writing like a congratulatory note to, to our graduating seniors and having, you know, board members sign it. Or I don't know what, what can happen. But, you know, just really exciting, exciting that graduation is just around the corner. And, you know, as we are ending this school year, I hope that we all can kind of take a moment to pause and reflect on just this incredible year that we have had. And it's been a roller coaster of a year and I know that we're all kind of getting, getting into gear for, for this upcoming fall and for what budget is going to look like and everything. But I think that we all deserve, especially Mike and the team, you guys really do deserve just such a huge, you know, pat on the back. And, and I hope that you guys can take a moment of pause to really, to let that sink in, to let that sink in, that you guys have truly made a difference for, for our district this year in this particular crisis. And I'm just so grateful to be a part of this community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheehan. And then Lisa.
All right. Hi, everyone. Okay, I have a lot of exclamation marks on my little list. So, first, I am, I wanted to echo what Martin said earlier. I'm really excited and happy and proud that we were able to do our very first Pride Month resolution or proclamation, I guess it is, that's the word I'm looking for. So, that's definitely a big step and I'm really excited that we decided to try and, and highlight those really important pieces of recognition to various folks in our community. So, really awesome about that. And I believe the last one that we did was for Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. And it's also really important. It was also the first time and just really excited that we're beginning to do that. So, awesome and hooray for that. And then so excited for our high school graduates who are going to graduate, like they're going to be officially graduated, more officially graduated than, than they, than they are now, the next time we meet. So, super extra fantastic congratulations to all of you for all that hard work, years and years and years of work. And this snafu is just one little sliver of it and it does not diminish your hard work in any way, shape or form. And your entire community is so proud of you. And really getting to be on the stage is the only reason that I'm still sitting here on the board. It's the only perk of the job and I'm so sad that we don't get to be there. I'm being very sarcastic or sardonic. It is not the only perk of the job, of course. But it is like a huge highlight every year. And I know that we're all so bummed that we cannot be there to celebrate with you. But we are really cheering each and every one of you on in spirit. We are so, so excited to be, to be just this very like small speck of dust on your educational journey as a school board of your school district. So, thank you for letting us do that. And I would say I am also really happy to hear the enthusiasm from the board about being a part of the graduation ceremonies. And I just want to rain on that parade a little bit and say, I think two really important things that we want to remember. Number one, for all the families and kids who are graduating, you don't really matter at all. And so, we should keep that in mind and I don't mean that meanly. I'm just being totally honest. And then the second thing is Beth has been working incredibly hard to make this happen. And I just think we should be very, very cautious about creating more work for her and her team right now. So, those are my thoughts about that, even though I think that it's a great thought and I would definitely participate if we did something. I'm just not sure it's super wise or pragmatic. So, Andrew said something really important earlier. I want to make sure that it gets highlighted. This is in the different changing gears. He got to vote for the first time. Yay, Andrew. Good job voting. You are just like 46% of people in Oregon who decided to fill out your ballot and you're super fantastic and amazing. It's a great job. I'm so thankful that we get to vote in Oregon by mail, even though. Yeah, thanks, Mark. So, that's just vicious part of how we do things in Oregon. And so, it's really exciting that we were able to do that. And so, we should just take a minute and realize that that's kind of, you know, that's kind of a privilege for us in Oregon. And so, I'm really excited that we got to do that. I'm proud of our community for continuing to come out in a relatively comparable amount to the previous presidential primary. So, great job, everybody. Yay, who voted. If you didn't vote, you should vote. Okay, so a couple more things. Our teachers and staff are just going above and beyond and working like crazy. And again, I'm so proud to be a part of the HSD team. And just seeing the extra work that all of the teachers that work with my own children personally are putting in is just really, it's really heartening and I, and I am so thankful. And I know every time there's this five-minute video that pops up where, you know, music teacher is trying to teach kids music without actually being there, like how much time went into that video and it's astronomical. And I know because I have to make my own videos for work, for my own job. And it's just, it's not just those five minutes. There's a lot that goes into it. So, thank you so much to all of the staff who are just working way more than normal. And then I also want to add, you know, teachers just always do carry and staff, school staff, this emotional weight with them that's sort of the weight of the job, the burden on the shoulders from being part of a family of, for all of your students, but not really part of their family and just wanting to support them. And I think it's probably, well, I know that it's incredibly challenging emotionally to be a teacher at this time and be distanced from your students. And so, let's all try and be understanding and treat our school staff with as much grace as we can because it's a real, real challenge that that's not normally part of, part of the job, that distance. So, so thank you to the teachers and the staff. And that is the last thing I have. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Lisa. And yes, we definitely, as you can see by the comments, we agree that we are definitely an afterthought, Beth. But our number one priority is that our students are, get the best possible graduation under the circumstances. And if there's an ability for us to participate, we are more than happy to do so. But whatever resources we have, they should be dedicated to our students. So, thank you. I wanted to just touch on something that Mark mentioned about creating a new normal. And I actually wrote an article for ORE, O R E D News that will be shared probably this week or next week at the latest. And I collaborated with a school board member from Salem and a school board member from Moma E S D. And the article is basically about this, is creating a new normal instead of going back. We definitely see the inequities highlighted during a time of crisis. And we want to highlight how we shouldn't go back, but instead we should keep the things that we're doing now that we didn't do before, like family engagement, like technology, access to technology for our students. So, I just wanted to share that with our, my board members. And I will share the link once it's published so that you're able to see it. And I'm using a lot of the examples from our district that we are doing that I'm so proud of. So, I wanted to just share that and highlight that I just had a huge amount of help and collaboration from Olga Cunha, who as you all know is an amazing staff member of HSD and a great asset to our community at large as well. I also just wanted to let you all know that there is, there is an effort that I was emailed about called communityforgrads.com. And it's just a community effort to, again, just keep showering our seniors and with kudos and appreciation and congratulations for all the hard work. And it's just a little thank you card and a sticker that community members are putting together. So, just wanted to give a shout out to those efforts. And again, thank you for all of our community members who are just stepping up in different ways. Our businesses, our foundations like HSF who are really taking on the challenge of addressing all the needs that we can't at the moment as a, as a district or that our community needs right now. And with that, I just wanted to say that I think part of that is that I don't see any other local government organization that has a such intimate relationship with our families and our students that we do. And I'm so proud about just for all the hard work that all of our staff has been able to do during this time.
I think more than any time before, when we say that we're proud to be HSD, this is what we mean. So, I just want to thank you all for all your work. And with that, our meeting concludes. So, thank you all for joining us today. The session is closed.